Boarding in progress.
Make the, make the motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of November 8.
Second. And further on those, on favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes one, two, and three for November 8.
Second. Further? On favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the special meeting minutes of November 17.
Second. On favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes of November 17.
Second. On favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda, second.
Have you anything to add to that? So, on favor?
Aye.
On the minutes before we get into public input, I recommend we unseal the 1117 minutes and the minutes number one and three from 1108, the circumstances for which we sealed them are no longer, the information is public, so I recommend we unseal those.
On favor? Aye. And do you have anything before we go into public input on the status?
Just wanted to mention, folks will notice, that Chairman Colby is not here, so he had a pretty significant fall before Thanksgiving, so he has been in the hospital, but I'll wish him well, understand he's on the road to recovery, but I just wanted to mention that that is why he's not here.
Thank you. Public input.
Hi. I'm Marcy Jarzadec from Seventeen Waters at Road in Lord Swansea.
I don't know if you'd want to come up and join us, I don't think I'm able to hear you from there, Marcy. Since you've got elected spokesperson, you get to join us up there.
Can my classmate come with me?
They can sit in the front row.
Well, again, I'm Marcy Jarzadec from Seventeen Waters at Road in Lord Swansea. I'm here to ask a few questions regarding the water level at Wiltshire Pond and to see if there's any updates as to when it will be gone down.
I was wondering that myself when I drove by this morning, so interesting that you should bring that in.
And I just, we're all concerned, and I'm the only notation, that we, there's docks that are in the water that normally are not in the water at this time, and if anybody has any insight as to what the problem is.
Understand from the DPW director that we're at the normal winter drawdown level in terms of boards, so the only answer I can speculate is that it's water coming in from up there, so that's keeping it from going below.
And why is the diversion dam not working? The diversion dam is in place to help when the situation such as this rises to stop the water from coming out of that river down to our pond and making the boards that are taken out do their job. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and somebody back here might concur, I believe there's still one more board that could come out.
Yeah, so, Mark Slar, so we were running five and a half boards this year, down and a half a board of some, of a previous level, and other things, we're trying to be a better level. Usually when we draw down, or we, for winter, we take all of one board out, and that's what we're told, the case, it doesn't seem like it, right? You know, if we're doing the same thing, why are we not doing the same result? We've not had a lot of training to, you know, mend it up, seeing how, I mean, I was away for four days, and I come back and the water is even higher. And as Marcy said, there's a lot of docks, people, you know, built their docks, designed their docks, they've gone, they've accepted the water level, and the water level is, is up by probably sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, it's accepted. So there's, you know, dock cases where we've taken out the F4 now, and they're, several of them I can do it, because it's their chance that they're racked a lot too, but we're really at a pretty extreme level at this point, and you'll see a nice solid five every month. So, and I don't know what the rule is, first, I would verify that all of one board is there, but maybe, maybe it's a mistake, I don't know, and if not, you've got to keep it at, you know, that F4 though.
Discussing against with Joe Russo and finding out something for next meeting?
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so Mark, you're, you're saying that normally it would be down to one board, so your expectation is it's down to one board now?
Yeah, that's what we're told, that there's only one board in it, right? But the water level is still probably, you know, it's, it's, about what we do normally for that. You know, I, with my laboratory, I have an island there, I could, at this point, I should be able to walk over to that island, I couldn't even come close to it enough. And, and, you know, we, we take some of our dock out in the winter, but it leaves, the section we leave in, we took it out because previous years, it's, then delays the dock, so when the ice forms and it melts on the end, the, the water goes in and out of the shore and falls off the dock with it, so a lot of us have had damage to our docks on the pond, so, so let's take the dock out, but it's not going to be good if, well, we've got, I've got one section left, if that's in the water too, that's going to get affected this way. But northward, it's dry, and it's not, it's, it's, there's about this much more water on the shore than there is in. There's probably over a dozen dock, that are normally safe, that if the water level stays where it is, if it's six inches down from it, we'll be damaged this year, and damaged. Sometimes freezes and starts raining extra, yes, nothing's happening. And something that we've been, you know, addressing for quite some time, right, I think that happened, you know, emails, you and I have spoken, we've talked, I don't know if, you know, if it's a solution, but it's definitely higher than happening.
So, if, if there's normally one board and there is one board, let's say there is, what, what would cause the, what would prevent the water level from going down to where it normally would be with one board?
Yeah, it's, it's got to be a flow coming in, you know, a couple of years ago, made it out, that's when I removed the area, maybe it's just we got by a diversion dam, that was pretty much through flooding, you know, in that block that we disagreed, you know, in the summer, we want the flow, when we draw the water down, we do the flow, we have nothing to control with that. No, I'm not even sure that's what's wrong, when you look at the water going in, in the cold, coming forward, flowing through there, it doesn't look like it's excessive, it doesn't look like it's extra water, so I'm not sure if that's what's going on. So that's why we think maybe there's something wrong with the board or, or something in the dam, because it doesn't look like we made a lot of water in there.
Rod Baron, fifty to your point, of Lord Swansea. Historically, and I walk around that pond a lot, and I've been living on the pond for eleven years, and every year, there are five boards out and five boards back in, and right now, there are only four boards sitting on that deck. I mean, it's been that way every, I've been coming to that pond since I was seventy-eight point, way back in sixty-two, I mean, by eighty, but that'll come, but anyway, that's, that's, it's a real problem, I mean, I have, I have five hundred dollars worth of damage done to my dock last year because of the ice pulled it out, and it's going to happen again, it's all up our, I could walk, we always, every fall and every spring, we rake our beach areas, we walked along thirty-two, we picked up all the gear bottles and cans that were thrown into the, from the car, can't, there's been bottles, there is, I show no beach at all, just water right up. And it's not only right now, it's, it's, it's in the summer, very good erosion, that pond is going up and it's going down to the set level, and if you went to the boat landing or the beach area, you look at the, what land is left there and how much has eroded in the last two or three years because of this, this up and down action that we're getting on the pond now, and I think it goes back to what Mark said, that if you go and look at that diversion dam, all the gear is gone, everything is gone out of, that used to be a gear-driven, I like, guilty, it goes up and down, it's all water, there's nothing there anymore. I think Joe, a couple of years ago, didn't he, didn't he try to stick a couple, yeah, so, but two-by-sixes down in the bottom there, but it didn't work.
So what did you mean by five boards?
There are three, two-by-eights and two-by-sixes, I'm not sure what there are, that hold the water level at a certain level that we want it, and the summertime now, we're at five and a half, is that correct? The half, I brought it up a little bit for promoting or whatever, where you take the five boards out and it goes down to a certain level, I mean, that's.
But this year, it's not going down?
No, there's only four boards sitting there. So I believe, unless they took one board with them, or one board broke, or, you know, I don't know, I don't.
So, so the boards are set aside?
The board is sitting, the board is sitting, you've got to leave it set on the top before putting it next frame, it's, it's just.
And it could be that there's a half board is still, who knows?
No, the full, the traffic full board, because there's six board altogether, plus a half board.
They took the six board out, put a half board in, the six board there, and then they removed the half board as well, then it should be four others.
So these four others, they're set aside?
Yeah, it could be five, half boards, they have, we only run down four of them, you know, but we don't know, you know, the figures are moving and putting them there, or should we have a board there?
So, there's a possibility there's no boards?
I'm not sure. No, I think that, I think that there's four and a halves visible, and that means there are two missing, so that, so that, you know, the pond, or one of them's a thing that's somewhere for repair. That's, that's a guess, but.
So we could have one board, two boards, or no boards?
No, we have either one or two in there. There's at least one in there, because otherwise, the level, yeah.
But wouldn't it be down anyway?
Normally, there's one board on, normally, there's one board in over the wind, so we're seeing higher, that board is at least, at least that one board is there, there might be more there, more. That's, that's the reason.
I'll, I'll, okay, I appreciate it, thanks. I've never seen it, I've, I've seen the one on Swansea Lake, so I have a visual, but don't really get confused, so yes, I will, thank you. When's our next meeting?
Uh, the calendar is on the agenda later, but I think we suggest it next week.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be prepared for next week, if not sooner.
I won't be here.
Your answer is.
These guys.
Thank you. Anything else?
There is also the, there's a fence there, that's in that board area, that's falling down there.
Yeah, we're, we're working on getting that.
Waiting for the water to go down to fix it. Public input?
Jane Johnson?
Yolanda Graves? Okay, well, we're along to capital improvement plan committee chair, Steve Fettle.
Heather brought it over, I printed some, Stephen sent over some updates, something where I thought it was only one section, but I guess there was more info, so it was on my email, not early, if you saw it, but.
First two reports.
Okay, um, if you turn, I don't know what you have.
There's.
On the whole report, if you do page two, uh, the capital budget year over there.
So page twenty-two.
This compares the current year to the proposed budget year and shows the difference, and it shows the difference by department as well as individual account, uh, and it comes out to a hundred and one thousand dollar increase for the coming budget year, or approximately a ten percent increase. So, if you turn to the next page, we're going to look at what this means. First thing is, each year, we have one-off items. Last year, we had a hundred and fifty thousand going into the fire station, actually, we had a total of three hundred, but a hundred and fifty was coming from undesigned native funds, not part of this budget. So we had a one-time item last year of a hundred and fifty that we don't have this year. We also have suggested appropriating eighty thousand for Mount Caesar in the library, so in effect, we've increased the real budget difference on a recurring basis, which is what we need to run the town on a cash basis, year over year, by a walloping a hundred and seventy-one thousand bucks, or seventeen percent. When you lay on top of that increased debt service, it becomes an increase year over year of approximately two hundred and eighty thousand, and baked into the pie by the virtue of timing of bonds, and I repeat, baked into the pie, is another two hundred and sixty-three thousand coming in twenty twenty-five, alarming numbers. Moving down to major increases, I attempted to group them in what I saw the underlying causes as, the biggest and the largest is eighty thousand dollars, which is simply inflation numbers for our major equipment in town, DPW, police, and fire. There are no new vehicles being added or anything like that, it's just the cost of these things is going off the roof, when we can get them, and we can't always get them. I know the Chiefs have problems getting cruisers, DPWs have problems getting trucks, and the fire truck is an ongoing issue, but these are the non-bonding fire trucks, the smaller stuff, and anybody who's bought a pickup lately knows what's happened to pickup prices. So it's eighty thousand dollars, pretty much as nearly as I can look at it, simple in, inflation. The other difference is a timing difference. In the past, we've used two revolving funds for capital items, one for recreation, which we eliminated this year due to the long overdue rebuild, uh, that's for recycling, I mean, and the other for rec, for recreation, which I'll deal with in another minute, but we had thought, and got lulled into the feeling that they were running a surplus from their programs during the summer, and in fact, they haven't been for the past couple of years, and what had happened was, we didn't draw down from that fund for several years, so it became quite large, well over a hundred thousand dollars, and we were living fat happy on that for a while. Well, that party was over. In my comment section, and I can address it now, I think, one, we have to look at at a recreations budget very carefully, and the out years, they're planning on spending as much as six hundred thousand on brownfield, which is a lot of money for a baseball pond. I think that it has to go under more scrutiny for both getting more revenue in to offset costs, and to look at long-term planning, brownfield is an important asset, but I, you know, there are certain finite limits as to how much one can spend, and of course, they should look at grants, too, an important point. So, by operation of recycling funds coming off, it's up another seventy-five pounds. We have a special item, more or less, which is the Denman Thompson, the steel bridge redecking, and we've got a reserve funds for that, as we're pretty much alone by ourselves at that redecking cost, no state funds, no grant funds, and then the other nets go in there. So that's pretty much what's happening on a cash basis, we'll go into bonds in a minute, but that's pretty well the push and pull of the budget, or, any questions on that? It's not a pretty picture, but it, I think it's pretty accurate as to what's going on underneath the numbers.
One question on, relates to Denman Thompson, Steve, I understand we might be getting some one-time state aid focused on bridge repairs, if that were to come through, would you want us to offset, reduce that amount so we can lower the?
That'd be very nice.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Assuming we don't have another bridge.
Right.
And it's always something.
I haven't gotten an amount yet, but I think it should be more than that amount, so.
It would be helpful. Uh, other observation, I, as I mentioned, recreation needs some work, which Michael and I have talked about, through revenues and whatnot, and it's hard to get a good feel for recreation until the whole process of the summer program sugars out and all the bills come in, which is generally right about now. So it's, it's lagging, which means during the summer, we really can't tell a whole lot, it's got sugar out at the end.
Well, and the, the worst numbers were a result of actually success of hiring and retaining more staff this year, which obviously has a cost to it, so.
And to be commended for that.
Exactly.
Not an easy thing. Recycling has some big ticket items on down the road, mainly bailers, uh, they, we've upped them a couple times, and, uh, their revolving fund has come off, so we've got a self-fund for it now, and we've indicated a number for them of sixty-five thousand per year going into their capital equipment reserve. They have a lot of equipment there, not as much as DPW, probably comparable to police. And we have to let some time go to see what the right number will be, but the horizontal bailer, which is over a hundred thousand, uh, is one item that sort of sticks out, and I think next year, we have to look at that more carefully. Fire, building, and equipment, we have two warrant articles coming up, we think, this coming year, one for the fire station, one to replace engine number two, which is the one that we patched up and got our three years out of, and now it's time to do a new one. I, and after that, when we get to bonds, we need another, we, we need to replace the ladder truck at some point, and we're going to need another engine at some point, two huge ticket items. Given what's happened in Swansea, which is very good news to, at least economically, not to everybody's personal liking, but we have a lot of higher rise apartments coming in, and we have a, we're going to have a good bump in our population and our tax basis, a huge bump, but we're going to need fire apparatus for that, and it's just a word of caution, I realize how difficult it has been to get fire warrant articles passed, it's IU, an essential item now, and we have to somehow get behind these things and replace this equipment, uh, there's nothing else to maintain our ISO grade. Sidewalks are still a work in progress, as Michael and I talk about, and sorting out the grants and how much it will cost, but it's still a work in progress, and I don't think we really have our sea legs as to how, the funding's going to come out for them, and I've read recently along Group Ten, it's proposed to build a sidewalk down to Market Basket, and that's not on our radar yet, but it's not on anybody's radar yet, but it's one more thing that's coming. As I mentioned, warrant articles, get your fire station engine number one. Road rehab disappointingly has to resort to formal bonding or actually borrowing, Michael's worked out a low-cost source for a loan there, but I'm disappointed that we had to return to borrowing for roads to get our big bond deal, thinking that we would go from that point on. At some point, we're going to have to hit a hard ceiling on road work with other things. FEMA grants, I understand, I, I just noted in passing, are still undecided, up in the air, the percentage, and, and that could have major impacts on all. air, the percentage, and that could have major impacts on all aspects of the town budget. New debt is at elevated levels. Before I turn to new debt, any questions? The next page simply has the cash budget stretched out over seven years. This year plus the sixth budget, which are mandated by statutes. They're pretty level. But inflation will, if it continues at the present elevated level, will have some impact on that. The action is debt service. And as you recall, CI PC looks at the total town obligation for capital projects as cash into the reserve funds plus debt service on our debt, because that's what hits the tax Debt service, if you look down at the next page, it goes to total for total debt service capex and capital expenditures. Increases dramatically. In fact, it doubles, more than doubles within a two-year period. We don't have much debt running off. The police station will be paid off in two, in two years, and beyond that, there's not much coming off in debt service on the capital side. Happily, I believe in three and a half years, the district debt will be paid off, which will be a bonanza for the town. But shouldn't have any impact on capital projects. That's a sizable increase. And when you look at the proposed debt service, there really isn't anything that you can say we don't need. It's all there, and with elevated interest rates, it's going to cost us more. I'm not sure where interest rates will go next year. It's a matter that a lot of people bet a lot of money on. I think they'll be pretty steady, and they might even tail off of it. But they're heck a lot more than they were. They're going to be probably double what we were used to paying. And I go through on the page after that, the detailed assumptions as to debt service term and rates. You'll notice the rates are approximately double than they were a couple of years ago. The page after that labeled macro analysis simply shows where the new debt is being incurred. And one is critical building improvements for new in the case of fire station. And I note that these are place over only. It's fire station two, the DPW shed, which has to happen, and the forever promised never delivered town hall. And the other is roads, the inclusion to complete out North Winchester and California. Fire is, as I mentioned, engine two, then ladder one, then engine one. Possibly engine one can be stretched out. I think engine two, we're, we're there with, the ladder might get one more year, but, you know, we'll be playing with fire after that, no pun intended. The self-containment breathing apparatus is just a given. So there's not a lot of latitude there that I see. And that's the picture. Questions, comments from the committee members here?
Steve, I missed it during our meetings, but engine two, is there a reason why it's on that schedule now and can't be pushed out?
It possibly could get pushed out one more year. The thinking was, you had to authorize it in advance if you want to buy the used piece of equipment. And so to get the warrant up, you don't have to pull the trigger. But one, otherwise, if it breaks, we're in a very bad spot. And it is limping, and probably we could get one more year out of it. But everybody felt on the committee that you might as well get the warrant article out there, because when you go shopping for used hardware, it's a hit or miss thing. It's on the market now, but it's not going to be on the market much longer. If you order new, there's as much as an eighteen-month delay. And new would be detrimental to our budget in the extreme. And the idea of buying a combined fire engine or pumper and heavy rescue eliminates one whole vehicle from the department, which I think is a brilliant idea. So that's where it comes down. Can it wait a year? Yeah, probably should it, no?
I understand it. So the two thousand one engine and the two thousand rescue, so try and replace it with one. And then there's the issue of if it is stationed in station two, or you don't have a station two that can fit the new truck, or make something else in.
All the way through weed. And then maybe town hall. Anything else? I'd like to thank all the help I got from the town staff and the committee.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Lisa Chief, Joe gets up first.
Evening.
Evening.
User-friendly.
Basically, there's little change at all as far as the budget's concerned, pretty status quo.
Wish I was lean. By my measure, you sure are.
So are you doing something different with recruitment, or is that just because of the hiring bonus?
I think we relocated the hiring bonus, the reason why it's much different than it is previous year.
No, it would be if we had to pay off a contract, I believe that's where we posted it. So if we just did the normal bonuses, it would be in the hiring incentive program, but if we had to pay off someone's contract with their existing town, it would be paid out of there.
How are we doing with recruitment?
We just started. It's kind of a, well, officially restarted.
Restarted.
Like saying the newspaper in the summer.
Yes. So we've got a couple of applications. We have someone who's interested in part-time, who's certified. Hopefully that pans out, it would be a great addition. So we'll work hard on that, see if that, we can make that happen.
We were back to fully staff basically briefly, which is why, because when you say start, I don't want them, you know, something we discussed recently, so I just wanted to make sure they were. It's not like, you know, we talked about it six months ago, we're just starting and kind of this being resumed, right?
Yes, I mean, you always have to be recruiting, in my perspective, constantly, because you never know when someone's going to retire or leave, where the purpose, so you always like to put the name brand out there to attract people when there is a viable opening, which we have in the near future, so. But we're actively recruiting now, so.
Yeah, Edna, Chief, and Julius worked on getting the posted wide, wide berth. Edna was looking at a lot of veteran-focused hiring websites, which have been Amcheer, Vermont, Stusset, municipal association, so local newspaper, so they're trying to, trying to cast a wide net.
Are you finding other communities with substantial signing bonuses?
Yes, again.
So what are we competing against?
I think a lot of communities are offering ten thousand. Others are one thirty thousand. They're up there. I think the more common ones you'll find would be ten thousand, but there are those that go above ten thousand. Especially a certified officer, it's tough to come by.
Do you foresee that we'll need to be in that realm?
It'd be nice to be in the ten thousand range, so we're kind of in the medium, so to speak, not in the lower portion. I really like bringing out people who want to be here and are here for the money, but those are few and far behind, so.
Part of the challenge can be also, you get the incentives really high, and then you're distant employees, saying, I'm already here, so what are you, what are you doing for me? So it is, there's a little bit of that balance, too.
You have a lot of loyal employees, so we're very fortunate.
So far, we haven't had to delve into that to any degree. That may?
No.
To any great degree?
Dull into...
The hiring bonus at that level?
We've had success. We've had full manning, which is a blessing. I don't think you find any other agencies that are fully manned. That's, that doesn't happen nowadays, so we've been very fortunate in that respect. But you never know, we've come across hard times if we lose another officer, so it's tough to replace. We hired an officer this summer, he's going to the police academy in January, we don't graduate the police academy until April, then he has a little year to finish, so it takes a long time and breaks someone on. Move somewhere a few weeks, a month, replace him several months to a year.
Sure. How are we coming with interior repairs?
We haven't really moved forward in that. Our department's busy, so I think in next month or so, we should have some time, come on in and do some minor repairs.
Should be good with work.
We did have a couple issues with the fire alarm. That's going to need to be addressed in the near future. They replaced all the older alarms in front of the building. That was rather expensive, I foresee an expense. We had a plumbing issue with water, a pipe, a pipe burst that had to be repaired. That was the expense we weren't anticipating. And we also had Peter go down because of the storm, and that was very costly.
Are the fire alarm repairs budgeted for here?
We'd like to put that into the building maintenance, because those things can be reoccurring, so, but we're covered for it. Well, we made up for it. I mean, it went over line item, because we weren't expecting that cost. It was substantial. They came back three or four times, tried to cycle over, it's the issue is recurring alarm, and it could be more issues or problems with it. So it needs to be looked at.
So who schedules that? Do you work that, or does Mike ask them?
I pretty much cover everything.
So you'll get that taken care of?
I'm just funding for it.
So where, but is the funding in the budget, or is it in...
Well, we can take advantage of it. It's early in the budget, so there'll be money there, but we don't know if something else could happen down the road later in the year. Hopefully not. You may get by a few years in, you know, major items, and then all of a sudden, you get hit with a few.
Sure. Michael, do we have money in the reserve for that?
Well, do we know how much we're talking about? Well, there's not a, it's not, it's not the largest reserve, because the building was obviously rehabbed to some degree, you know, in the not-too-distant future, so it's not a huge reserve.
But funding was well over four hundred dollars, actually over six hundred dollars, and...
No, but I'm talking, it sounds like you're talking about future work, right? So do we have an estimate of what that future work would come?
No, I don't have an estimate of future work. I mean, if it's like anything else, how much money do you want to spend? Not much. But it can be very costly, so it needs work.
Shall we get a handle on that fairly soon?
Yes, sir.
I was in the Tahoe building.
Beautiful.
Did you tell them about it? Is it better than the...
Much better.
Are they more readily available, or...
They're available. And then again, you never know. The auto industry, as you well know, you can't really anticipate everything that's going to happen, so. For example, Ford PIU went up nine thousand dollars in one year. Who was expecting that? I guess I wasn't, so you never know. Finding parts now for Ford's is difficult. Two newer vehicles have recalls. It's a simple fix for the most part, but they don't have the parts. And when you call and ask about it, call us back in the spring, or we'll get back to you in the spring about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not hugely significant, but it's something to mention on the sub-budget for the regional prosecutor's service that we utilize through the county, that's seen an increase due to the expiration of the felonies first program, which was a little bit of a slowdown, but just to note, it's in the, it's on the back of the second page down below, but it's a little more than the normal, you know, three to five percent increase on those.
I mean, they're having difficulties with manpower also, so they're, they've pushed down more work towards the police department's view, so they don't have to deal with the mundane issues and items that they have to handle. So we're kind of doing some of that work, but if it's anything else, everything's going to have a price. It's difficult to, you know, pay the prices that they want to get paid.
We're hiding that. So the twenty thousand dollar increase in that line item is just for the prosecution services, or is it what you're having to pay our staff to do the work?
No, prosecution.
And we're spending more of our resources to do their work that they can't do if it has a personnel theory. Do you want to include this, Michael?
Still cheaper than hiring your own prosecutor, so.
Yeah, I'll give you that. Thank you.
David Ainsley.
How are you?
Good job, he's here.
We have the same weather a few months ago, but why not today?
Right.
At least it sums up.
It's all perspective, right? So...
So, what's there to talk to you about? I've been here a couple times, I think, talking about this proposal. There's this aviation group and a subsidiary company they have to do a market study and then market and try to attract business to develop the airport. So when I met this company at a conference and they gave a presentation on developing land airports, then realized that this might be the first one to bring on board. This company, they specialize, that's all they do, is they look at property at airports that need to be developed, and then they've got connections with all these aviation businesses in the industry, and they try to connect them. When I brought it forward before, there were some concerns in the proposal, and we were able to set up a virtual meeting with Michael and the city manager from Keen, myself and consultants, and go through the proposals. It was pretty enlightening, I think, because just having them explain the proposals, at least to me, it looked like there was a lot more that we were gonna get out of the product than what I actually read in the proposal. And on the first, what I have here with the aviation group consultant, on the back is their appendix A, which really breaks down what the deliverables are in that part. So the market feasibility study is basically gonna look at what our market has, what our opportunities are, what our challenges are, and then also look at competitive airports and the same thing there. And then they're gonna, with that information, they're gonna decide whether they would move forward if we chose to do the marketing, if they figure we have a product market. Looking at it generally, to begin with, we did our land use study, shared that with them, and they were pretty positive, looking at that, saying we do that. Some good stuff there. So, one of the things that I believe Michael brought up in that discussion was there was something in the proposal about other reimbursables, if they had to travel or something like that, that there could be additional fees. After that meeting, they agreed that anything that they did would have to be approved by us. They wouldn't be able to just do that and bill us, so we would have to pre-approve it before they could do that. So there'd be no surprise charges on that. I believe that was the only question we had on this part of the proposal. We did also discuss how the payment would work, if we were splitting that between Keen and Swansea. There'd be two payments, a down payment and then another payment at the end of the product. What we've discussed is either the city of Keen would pay one, Swansea would pay the other. Either way, we'd pay the same amount, one would just pay the down payment, one would pay that upfront, which was acceptable to them.
And I would think if we wanted to proceed, I would recommend we do the down payment now, because we have most of the funds available in the Economic Development Advisory Committee budget that's gonna go unspent, so that way we wouldn't have to add it into our budget for next year. And it's in the middle of their fiscal year, so they don't care, because there's a July to June fiscal year.
Yeah, I have my budget, we could move forward after. I really think that document, you know, whether it came out positive for us to be able to move forward with the brokerage part, or otherwise, there's gonna be a lot of valuable information in that that we can use if we try to market ourselves or going out to someone else.
Is it possible, David, after the market analysis, they would say, "We don't think your airport is worth..."
I think that's their whole purpose, is they don't want to get into the brokerage part of it.
Right.
They don't really know. Plus, it might be preliminary work for them to know how to market it. I think that's a big part of it, is they're gonna say, "Okay, we're gonna look at it, so now we know where to focus, and what our challenges are, what our strengths are." But I think there is that possibility. I don't think it's a strong possibility, I think we've got very marketable parts in there.
Along with something like this take.
Was it a two-year project?
Was that the best study, or was that the marketing?
That was the marketing.
That was the actual marketing.
I'll have to look, actually, Michael's got the actual proposals too, what the original. I think we talked about that, I think, three months.
Yeah, I think it was something happened in here to, you know, if I had a, do you have a number? Did it have a schedule in there? Yeah, I don't see where it says, but three months sounds, sounds right.
Yeah, sorry. That was for the study, and then I think it was the 20. Four months. So, and that's the second part, Aviation Property Network, it actually subsidiary of this aviation group, so we kind of work together, they do the market and tenant procurements. And again, this is the part that really impressed me, is hopefully Staggers has extensive real estate knowledge and experience, and leading aviation real estate provider in an niche market. So most of that, I think that what we were really focused on there, which was a big hurdle, I think, or maybe even a wall, that we didn't want to get through, both the city of Keen and Swansea, was the, how long the percentage of revenue from the lease would, that they had in their proposal that it was any extensions or renewals, which could be a long time. So talking to them about that, they agreed and said that their, the payments would only be for the initial term, which we'd be looking at 20 years. So we would probably do a 20-year term with a 20-year renewal option, so it would only be for the first 12 years, which I, that was, that was probably a no-go with both the city of Keen and the town of Swansea, and they amended that in their.
And that would be paid more or less upon, upon signing, right? It's not, we don't, we wouldn't make the payments over 20 years.
Correct. Yeah, one was on, there's two parts to it. One was on actually collecting lease revenue, and one is on signing, so pretty much the same thing.
I put in here, I'll pull it aside, but just, I use like one of the CNS hangers, it's just an example, kind of look, because it had an assessment, it had a square footage, and if, you know, looking at a profit of over 80,000 over the 20 years, even just on the, I think that was just on the town portion of the tax rate. So, you're paying like 9,500 upfront, but over 20 years, you'd be bringing in 80,000 profit over taxes, so. It is a little bit upfront, but I think the percentages are at the point where it would work.
And also, just clarification, we're not looking for people to build private hangers, this is to bring in businesses, you know, we'd need jobs, we'd need revenue. We're marketing specifically for aviation businesses. And then, again, I've mentioned this a couple times, because of our grant insurances, we can't develop properties that has access to the airfield unless it's an aviation business. So we're kind of restricted to bring in aviation business, but that'll work great, too. I think we've got a great possibility to do that, and it's gonna help the businesses at their port.
Michael, you're the 9,500 number, where did that come from?
Can I include my caveats?
Is that the study number?
Yeah. Was that the, no, I think, yeah, that was from, no, I did it based on the percentage of the.
The lease.
The lease, I believe. Yeah, so this, so it was like an 80, this one that I used as the example was the 80,000 square foot lease. So I did that over 20 years, and their rate is 30 cents per thousand. And so I got to a total commission of 28,800, and then, what was the 9,500? That gives me 14,400. Maybe that was for the original study.
Yeah, if you take that long path on the original, it'd be easier to return.
Oh, yeah, factoring the initial in there. Okay, I rounded that up to 9,500, yeah, I'm sorry, that was the original study.
Okay, so we're sharing in the commission, and that would be paid upfront?
Right, on, more or less upon execution.
Successful execution of the lease. So, okay.
So the commission in that example was 14,400 for us, not 95. The other 95 was the initial study.
And so the 80,000, that's based on what our current.
Current tax rate, yeah.
The expectation would be from the assessed value.
Right.
Would that be for the initial 20-year term?
Yeah.
So, and then you've got the tax revenue, it's not gonna be over after 20 years, right? So we would, we would expect anybody gonna build a facility every year, 40, 50 or more.
But basically, even only, even if we only got one development out of the study and then hiring them, we'd have over an $80,000. Again, using it as an example, a bunch of caveats, but it wouldn't take, it's not like we need to get, oh, we need to get like 10 businesses in here for it to, for it to break even, and it would only really take.
If there's no success in bringing anyone in, there's no cost.
Yeah, it's just the yearly out, the initial study.
I think the study will let you know whether it's worth pursuing, anyway. So, the expectation is that the study will come back favorably, but if they're not interested in moving forward, that very much gives you an indication.
Yeah, if they, if they, if they decide to move forward, it really doesn't cost us anything unless they bring in us a development.
All right.
All right.
What do you need from us to?
Just go, go ahead, we'll have them, do we have a proposal, or we're just, is that?
All right, I'll make that motion, Beverly.
Motion's in, made, no second to authorize expenditure of the 9,500 from the 2023 EDAC budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it.
Awesome. Thank you very much, I'm excited to see what this, what comes forth from this.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
You too, Michael.
Rail Trail Committee.
You guys?
Aye.
Okay, so budget, change from '23 to number 24. This is with the new, you've got some admin costs that basically double, you should have all the minutes and double. We have some equipment rental, we're looking again at excavator with some, a mower on it, digging bucket, basically keep the ditches and culverts clear, charnel boy washouts, which we'll be into later. Probably the focus next year will be on the Cheshire Trail, we did a lot of work this year on the Ashtray actually. Printing copies and publicity promotion, kind of wants those together. This is, you know, purchasing brochures, rack cards, things like that, we continue to pass those out. Bruce has a brochure holder down at Ashtray, a trail man, he said he's filled it quite frequently, so people do take them, get away out. We might do a little tweak to it, it's been about two, three years since we modified it, so we might do some design work. Then the next thing, or last item, is trail maintenance. So as we do all this work, there's costs to run the equipment, like the fuel, any oil, we might need sharpening blades, replacing parts, parts can break, so cover those, you know, costs. This is basically the operations. So that's all the line items, total $7,400, which is same as 2023. So any questions on that?
You work pretty tight on the trail maintenance. So, you comfortable with that?
Yeah, we are, we discussed it at our trail committee meeting, and everybody was pretty comfortable sticking with what we have. We've also received recently a donation from a Swansea resident to do rail trail work, and we're planning to use that, plus we're hoping to use some money from this year to spend next spring to fix the section down in Westport. Joe's trying to help us with the culvert down there, but because of all the flooding and work he had, he won't get to it until probably another couple of weeks. We've held our fix, probably can do a ton of crush gravel and trail surface. So, we think we're gonna have a couple grand left over this year, or we'd like to use next year, plus this 2,400 we got from a private, rather than to do that work. I also work with.
How'd they carry that over, Michael?
So I spoke to Bruce, and I, Mike, you know me, I know the facts. So basically, as long as we have a signed contract or proposal, we can encumber the funds from the 2023 budget.
So Bruce is working to try to get that.
Yeah, I'm getting on the job tomorrow, to get the contact information and see if they're receptive for that.
Okay. Also, I have a relationship with Suzanne Bainsley, the Cheshire County Grant Writer, directs in the middle writing a grant to complete all the trail surface on the Cheshire Trail teams on the Swansea. So, we should be submitting that in a couple of weeks, and then we cover all that. So we're trying to find other ways to make this work. So I think we're okay with what we have.
You still on the hunt at the casino, suppose?
I checked into that, and if I remember right, so the collaborative that, regional collaborative that I've run, we couldn't use that, because we're affiliated Bike Walk the Lines in New Hampshire, which already did us a bill. And I thought municipalities weren't eligible, so I don't think we could go through the town of Swansea. But, do you know if it's true or not?
I don't.
Yeah. So we were stuck. I could check on the municipality part again, but I thought it was only nonprofits. But I could check in.
Could we create something for the rail trail?
Well, it kind of exists with the, you're saying like create like a nonprofit or something, but the rail trail collaborative, you're saying that's already affiliated?
That's an affiliate of the Bike Walk the Lines in New Hampshire, which, that's the federal ID number that you use, which is what the casino wants, and they'll look at, and say, "Oh, this organization is already submitted."
So we need to hit them up for them.
So. But if we can form a 501(c)(3) somehow within the town, that would be, I don't know, it would be asking. That's another.
It might not be up to us, but it might be up to you.
Swansea Rail Trail.
Friends of the rail trail.
Yeah, something like that. It's an idea, it's why. Okay, so any other questions on budget? Okay, so rail trail update?
Well, it's kind of budget-related, but it didn't really come up too much at the, you weren't here for Steve's presentation, but CIP committee is recommending we create a rail trail fund, capital reserve fund, so.
Okay.
That would be on the.
So that gets to my sustainability handup? Yeah, you have that, that in the packet.
Yes.
Yeah, I have an electronic burden.
I think you got one.
So when the CIP came up at our trail meeting, I was asking, basically learning how all this works. And what, where it ends up is, okay, well, what does the trail committee want for capital equipment? Which then leads to, okay, well, how are we gonna manage and manage these trails going cold? So today, the way that they're maintaining is a lot of volunteer labor and a lot of volunteer equipment. So Bruce is one of the guys who volunteers his equipment and his time. I volunteer some of my equipment and my time, and then we also do it through grants in this budget we have here. So, the question is, is that how we want to manage it long-term, right? Because I feel with a lot of volunteer, equipment, labor, although it's low cost, is high risk. Bruce can decide to move Florida next week, and I can decide to follow him or something, and now, you know, you gotta try to find new people to, you know, to fill the gap. So, I'm here today, and I came up with these different ways it can be done. So you can have all volunteer, which is item one, which I kind of discussed. Well, item two is volunteer with some rented equipment, which we're kind of doing today, because we use a grant like our TP grant to rent equipment, and then we run volunteer labor. Item three is just rent equipment, don't rely on other people's equipment, and do volunteer labor. And then four, you could actually contract everything, contract everything. And then four, you could actually contract everything, contract everything, equipment, labor, the whole bit. And five is Swansea owns everything, right? Swansea has a person running the equipment, they own the equipment, they maintain the equipment, and all of that. Each item has pros and cons, some low cost, but higher risk. And I also included, but I won't go through all the detail, what the cost would be if you went from a, a volunteer rental concept all the way up to a fully owned, right? I guess I'm here to just get an idea from you guys, what do you think is possible? Because then I'll take that possibility back to the rail trail committee, and then we can talk about what we want to put in the CIP, right? And what the strategy is, if the strategy is, hey, we want to have Swansea own this, have the labor and all the equipment, then we start working towards the CIP plan and buy all the equipment over multiple years. If that, people feel that's not possible, then we would do something more less than that, right? So I'm trying to get a feel for which direction, little advice on what direction to go, right? Continue on the path we're on, which is a lot of volunteer labor and equipment and some rental, and just for the best, or we start to purchase a little equipment, or.
How, how does, how does the graph on the next page correlate with what you just went through?
Yeah, so on the following pages, what I did though is I said, all right, let's start with, like, if in phase one, we pretty much rented, you know, everything, what would it cost? Right? And what's that rental cost, and even there's maintenance with renting too, because when you're renting, you could have, you have fuel costs. Uh, you could, you could, like, we, we showed a couple hydraulic lines this year, where they replace them, you know, that kind of thing. So what I tried to show in each phase is if, like, phase one, if you just rented, you know, it would be fourteen thousand dollars to rent everything that we have on today, which is tractor and brush hog and dump truck, excavator, the whole thing.
I understand that, Mike. Well, I'm curious, how, how do these phases relate to the fives?
Yeah, so, so the phases is, is going from the rental type of, um, concept, which is item three, to Swansea owner, so it's from three to five. So it's moving from three to get to five.
And, and it's just different ways to get there.
And it's just a phased approach to get there, you know, it's not, instead of buying it all upfront, we rent a little, buy a little, rent less, buy more, and eventually at the phase seven, you own it all.
So the, the first block, the cost is, how, how does that relate? Because it looks like there's both a rental option, a purchase option.
Right, so in a year, like, for example, in phase one, nothing's being bought, it's all being rented.
I'm sorry, my, my fault, the, the block just before.
Oh, oh, that's just the cost of the items. So that's just, you know, for example, forty horse tractor, to rent that for a month costs nineteen hundred, twelve, one thousand nine hundred eighty.
I got it, if you bought it, it was fifty.
If you buy it, it would cost fifty thousand, right?
So you're, you're kind of at, if I understand right, you're asking for input on this, on the, on the phased approach versus the purchase approach? And you're also asking for advice with regard to the one through five of, of how we see the program proceeding, is that fair?
I, I would say it's probably more on one through five, because if you guys advised Swansea owned it, then I think we would come back with a proposal on how to get there. Right? My phase approach is one idea, right? I go back to the committee and say, here's one idea, let the committee come back with a proposal. Okay, that's my thinking.
So my take is, is a valid one that you presented, that Bruce goes to Florida and you follow and we have nothing.
Right.
So I'm wondering if, if it's something that could be researched over the course of the year.
Yeah.
Uh, with portion of it going to DPW and a portion of it going to recreation. Because it seems to me DPW would have some of this equipment, could need some of this equipment, and, and have the staffing to do both of what they're doing now, plus the trails. And then, like, with, with Bruce's bulletin or brochure, we, we could be handling that through the rec department.
Yeah.
Or something else, so there'd be a delineation of duties, and we already have the staffing in place to some extent. There could be a weaning process, so that you don't go to Florida right away, but you have the opportunity in a few years.
We'll let you take a vacation.
Because there would certainly be a learning curve with all that, and with all the progress that you guys have made, and I'm sure Michael's heard it as well, it, it's a strong attribute for living in Swansea. It's amazing to me that people would know about what you all have done in the last five or six years to, to make these trails viable.
Definitely, yeah, I think it's coming along pretty nicely.
Very, very nicely. They've done a great job.
Yeah, I think creating the capital reserve fund is something I've been suggesting they think about, because we're, you've done a great job developing and improving these assets, that they are assets that are gonna require more and more direct costs too. So by creating the fund, that's the step, that's, that's an important step, and recognizing it's another piece of infrastructure that we don't own.
It's another piece of infrastructure. And we put a lot of work, I don't want it to fall apart, you know, if it's, if it's neglected for three, four years, it starts to fall apart. And so you gotta stay, kind of stay on top of it. Mother nature's out there every day trying to do what she can. All right, so your proposal, your advice to us is?
It's just off the top of my head.
Yeah, well, one idea.
We should talk about it, to be, to set the concrete before rumors get started and all that, it should be a thoughtful process.
All right, so, well, I'll start with contacting Joe, with the, with the idea that you had of, you know, some of it being, the maintenance part being in the DPW, and then the rec department handling, like, all the marketing kind of stuff, and see how he responds and how she responds to that.
I don't want to speak for him, but I don't, I think manpower would be a concern to take, to take that on, you guys are putting in a lot of time out there, and, um, I think that would.
Yeah, I have numbers around all that, because we track all our labor, so we track how many hours we did this year. And so I kind of looked at that, and then I kind of extrapolated from that, if you had a person, how many hours would it take and all that? So I could review that with Joe, maybe he comes back and says, okay, we can do this, but you gotta hire a person part time every summer or something like that, right? Because that's about what we do. All right, great, good.
Something good.
You okay with status of the rail trails, what's happening? Open to hear that? Okay, so this year, we, um, we had an excavator for three months, which we got from our TP grant, the Recreation Trails Program Grant. And we were able to do maintenance on the trail from Riley Conservation, actually right at the gate at the Riley Conservation area, uh, all the way to Tower Lane in Westport. Okay? We did bypass all the washouts, which is from Pine Street down to the south Polverhead Road Crossing, which is two miles, maybe mile and three quarter, because of all the washouts, we can't get through there. Uh, but we did everything else, which is mowing with the flail mower, anti-mowing, all that kind of stuff, uh, ditch clearing and clearing culverts, nothing. I thought it went really well, we got a lot done, it was a lot better, I thought it was a great job. Um, so that's happened there, and then on the Cheshire Trail, wasn't too much this year, I did some mowing out there, pretty much, a couple culverts got clogged, cleared those, but not, not as much work on that trail this year.
Where are we seeing the most activity?
Uh, well, if you look at numbers, the Ashtray Lot Trail gets more traffic, I think because it's connected to Keene, and the Cheshire Trail's severed at Route one oh one. Okay, so there's no, there's no bridge over one oh one. And Keene has a project to fix that, so they have a project called the Transportation Heritage Trail Project that they're working on, to complete the trail from Eastern Ave in Keene, up to one oh one, put a bridge over one oh one, upgrade the Stone Arch Bridge to current pedestrian standards, put a bridge over Swansea Tractor Road, and they connect with us. Okay, that's why I want to get our portion of the trail in Swansea done, because that would encourage DOT and everybody else involved to do the Keene project. Because, hey, Swansea's got their part done, and downtown Keene got their part done, how about this thing in the middle, right? So, because a lot of people don't even know, coming out of Keene, that the trail, the Cheshire Trail continues on Swansea. I met a couple people out there one day, and I s, and just started chatting, I said, where did you start? They said, at the beginning. I go, where's that? They go, right at one oh one, where the bridge is. I said, well, you know, the thing goes to Bellis Falls, right? They didn't know that, so I think that's, it's a big reason. And the Ashtray Lot Trails, then, you know, Bruce did a bunch of work a year ago, and it's in, it's in pretty good shape, especially coming out of Keene going to Swansea. That one, to me, gets more traffic, but I've seen more traffic on the Cheshire Trail now that we're fixing it, you know, you build it, there will come.
Seems to be more traffic at all purpose now, with people parking, like, someone using the trail, there's no parking in that area.
Yeah, 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 where they, they, they put in, like, three or six spots for us there, and I've seen people using them.
There's a heavy, heavy bike traffic now, this year.
On the Cheshire Trail?
I thought the trail came down there, I couldn't believe how many bikes were going down, but, and not just during the daylight hours, it's absolute, it's, it's. Early morning, you know, darkness going out, you can see a head, a man bobbing, so, yeah, right?
The COVID actually greatly increased traffic on the rail trails, and I think it's, it's sustaining, and then I think another thing is the e-bikes. I see lots of e-bikes out here, I talk, stop, chat with people, and a lot of people that haven't ridden the bike in years, on e-bike, now they're, they're out there doing it, so I think that's, I think that's increasing traffic as well.
It's not a motorized wheel vehicle?
Well, according to the state, a class one and two is not a motorized public, right? So e-bikes class one and two are allowed on their property. But it's becoming an issue because there's a whole bunch of other, uh, they're called PEDs, personal electric vehicles, that are just going really fast. Somebody sent me a video of one of those, you know, those fat tire units, unit bikes, a unit, he stand like, stand like on two platforms and it's a big fat tire. The manufacturer that advertised this can go eighty-seven miles a lot. Eighty-seven. So imagine you're on ninety-one doing seventy-five, heading up to, you know, I don't know, Whitewater Junction, and this thing goes by you. So I, I see, I hope I see more regulation coming, defining these things in different classes, because there's motorcycles out there now, there's mopeds, there's all kinds of electric stuff. But, because it's not well defined, we find them on trails, although I've had cameras out on the Cheshire Trail, and I see cars and trucks and all kinds of stuff on there, so.
Is the bridge by Dartmouth Road that we got?
Uh, it's, it's, it's working on it now, it's actually coming up really nice.
It's over halfway done.
It's really nice.
Can the excavator go across that, or no?
I'm sorry.
Can the excavator, excavator go across that?
When it gets done with it this time, it'll, should be able to.
We should probably check it out.
They, they, I think it was.
I'll be dead before they have to fix it. Washouts, so as you're aware, right, we had a bunch of washouts back in July, uh, seven in total. The first ones, uh, parallel to Eaton Road, like, it's two seventeen Eaton Road, or Cindy and going higher. And then all the way down to just north of the south Polverhead Road Crossing, there's seven. So, you know, we started, when it first happened, we contacted the Trail Bureau, we did out, went out and did a bunch of surveying, documented the whole thing. The state kept saying, we're not gonna be sure if we're gonna file for FEMA or not. Well, then last week, I get a call from a Karen McAllister, who's at Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for the state, and said, Mike, FEMA wants to come out Monday, can you be there? So on that Monday, two people from FEMA, two people from New Hampshire Homeland Security and Emergency Management, this guy from DNCR, two people, I think, from Human Services or something, there was like ten of us. And we walked the whole thing, and I thought they were great. They, they looked at everyone closely, they were taking dimensions, they were writing down, what do we, what would it look like, what, how do you want to fix it? Documented that for every one of them, and the FEMA people didn't balk at all about getting it fixed, and got all the reports written. This guy from DNCR is supposed to be the project lead, and I asked the FEMA guy, what's next? He says, well, we get all the reports written and submitted, and it goes into a phone call. And I go, is that Washington? He goes, yep. So my plan is to call the DNCR guy every two or three weeks, might know how I do that.
Two and a half weeks. What's DNCR?
Uh, Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, uh, which is.
The State Trails Bureau.
Which is a state department, and under them is the Trails Bureau, and I think the Parks Department, and under.
Government submitted a date, over three years ago.
So, there's hope, that FEMA will help pay to fix these washouts, and some of them are pretty significant.
I don't even want to ask, but what does that mean for possible re, uh, reallocation of the tax program?
Oh, I still, still gotta fix the trail.
Okay, so still.
So FEMA's only gonna fix the washouts, they're not gonna fix the trail, you know, from Pine Street.
So stick with those segments that we had.
And I'd say, still stick with over, no, no change needed.
So no more changes?
Yeah, no more changes. So I'll give her.
Contact with Jane Shaheen's office.
Uh, I think when this all started, she got contacted, I contacted our local reps, you know, there was a lot of noise made, where Chris Coates got involved, you know, how are we gonna fix this? All that kind of stuff, but that was back when nobody knew if the state was even gonna contact FEMA. And the reason they were hesitating is they've gotten burned in the past, they've fixed stuff and never got reimbursed. They kept being asked to provide more information, and finally said, you know, we just can't keep putting our resources out here doing this, right? Something must have happened, because all of a sudden I get a call, boom, the rapper.
I wonder if Maggie's office would be receptive since they were here back in July.
Oh, you mean contact again and just?
Well, with regard to what you just did with, with the group of ten and black hole and all of that, whether they could.
Push it along a little bit? Yeah, possible, I'll see how it works.
Invite up for the ribbon cutting.
What, of the washout?
Redone FEMA rail trail. And when they call FEMA and say, we're going to the ribbon.
Yeah, there is.
Just schedule the ribbon.
Go ahead, schedule the ribbon cutting out.
Can make us over so far.
All right, uh, that's it for Bruce, anything else you can think of?
Just the, the one by the substation, it looks like the, the Eversolts making saddles.
Yeah, right, sure.
Because they've got so much interest right there, like, they're actually on the trail, but anyway, they got so much interest that they would be there trying to fix something if they had to get down.
How was it?
I'm sorry. I, I think they're, so they'll look into it, fix that, and improve it, so that it won't keep, this is like the fourth time.
Sure. Second time in three or three years, right?
Yep, I recall the one step for the brand.
Is the trail, Ashtray Lot Trail accessible from the airport?
Uh, from the airport, no, no, you, I mean, you gotta get on thirty-two and then on Swords Crossing and, you know, that type of thing, cross the bridge.
Causeway Road.
And then.
Do you remember the old bike pet committee that Steve, uh, headed up, he was chairman of it, we actually had a plan of, and somewhat permission from the airport, go down alongside the fence, and then go and come out on the Old Causeway Road, and come up, but, uh, he left and I can't talk to it.
I only ask because at the airport meeting, one of the points of discussion was bringing up photos to put on the website to show people walking and snapping bird pictures and all that, and I just, I didn't know how close we were to it, as to where.
Well, there could be something there, I think, there's been talk on, uh, how to connect.
Connect the trails.
Connect the two trails east to west.
Connect the two trails east to west, there is no simple path, but one of these, what Bruce is saying, go by the southern part of the airport and around and then come out. You got to, I think there's a bridge got to be put over the river. Come out on Causeway, which is pretty close to the trail, you know, by the Crescent Bridge.
We're gonna have to figure a way over, over there, near there anyway, to have the sidewalk continue down to the park for the boat landing. Somehow we got to get people that are just dead ending there across.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, we got to get over that bridge with pedestrian. If, if there is airport work going on now that involves, that would be open to, you know, bike and pedestrian, I'd be willing to talk to somebody about that.
I don't know that there is. This was more of a marketing concept.
Yeah.
Trying to figure a way to bring Swansea into it.
Yeah.
What you all are working on.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great, if we could get to there. Even if we could just get to thirty-two from the Ashwell Trail going east. Because there is that road there, what's that, class six? You know, class six road on the east side, I love Mobile Station.
Sycamore Hill?
Sycamore Hill. You go up there, then you got to kind of cut through the woods a little bit, then you end up on, what is it, Fox Run or Sugar Hill on the other side. And then you can get on the Cheshire Trail from there. There, there is a way.
Take your life in your hands. There is a way.
But it's not an easy way.
Safet Drive, sidewalk.
A lot of people walk out there, you don't know that way.
Yeah, a lot of people do walk, because I bike a lot.
I know, I had proposed, when they were doing that construction, why didn't they put a sidewalk in right at the same time?
Well, that housing that's going in there now, in the corners, does that get up, does that, does that kind of back up to the car grounds?
We're going to.
Could there be pedestrian through that and come out of the car grounds?
Probably their plan is, why doesn't they have some trails in there around the, I think they have residents to watch.
Yeah, yeah, you know, that's an idea. Something like that, that would be cool. Because once you get to the all purpose store, the trail's right there. And maybe then we have to just put a crosswalk or something.
You can help with that.
Yeah.
Seriously, you think some of these things we've been tilting out are bad, trying to get a crosswalk with it?
Yeah.
Across the state highway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Bruce. I need some winter biking, and then that glove off.
Oh, I have.
Okay, good.
We're running on a new business, the Grange Hall, we know it'd be pretty soon.
Yes, and Bill called me, I probably hasn't connected Mike until later, but Bill asked if Mr. Jasmine was aware of this concept. And basically, this, this aspect is part of the approach, which I think is more or less consistent to what we've been doing the last couple of years, of trying to keep the building dry. So that means windows, you know, we've done some of the doors and some of that stuff, it means drainage around the building. So at this point, we're only looking to apply for the grant, we're not actually, you know, spending any money or doing any work. But we don't want five hundred grand there, and say, well, we really don't want to replace the windows or something. So he is aware of it, he's helped with the quote, he's involved.
Does it fit in with the overall plan that he has with regard to structural integrity and everything else, and you know, slides discussed about moving it back?
I think it's, I would say replacing the windows is irrelevant to move them back, whether we move it or not, it's going to, it's definitely going to need new windows. When I work with.
But it does have a lot to do with the future disposition of the building.
How so?
The camel's nose under the tent. At some point, you get to the point where you've got no choice but to, we have the building. I don't know what that discussion is.
That would be a great discussion to happen.
Well, but if you, if you invest the money into the grants, and what, what obligation does the grant put on the restoration of the building? And then, at this point, we don't know the number to do it, it really hasn't gone through the body politics almost. Just, it just seemed, the reason I asked was it seemed premature, that, that there hasn't been a final decision about renovating the building.
That's correct.
And that is how this building is going to go, because they, they had the windows all redone with the double glazing, so. I just don't know.
No, I, I don't disagree. I think, I'm serious when I say, I'd love, I'd love for that discussion to happen, because it's, I'd love for that discussion to happen, so to make sure we know we're, we're going in the right direction. But now at this point, they're trying to get grants, which I think is what we would want, again, assuming we want to rehab the building. If that's not the case, that's fine too, but we need the board to tell us that. So it's, it's, it's existing funds that are in there.
I just don't think the board is going to do that. I, I think it's, the town's got to get behind, this is not one where the town's going to put in a couple hundred thousand, and Pete Johnson's going to pull a million out of the air. This is one where we, we don't have anybody pulling money out of the air. This is one, this is going to fall on the taxpayers, based on how it's currently going. So if it's going to fall on the taxpayers, they're looking at at least seven, if not eight hundred or more to do it. And we haven't had that discussion. I'm not, I'm sure not going to recommend it. I'm not going there. It's one thing to have my wife telling me we should be keeping our town buildings in good shape and all that, because she looks at the cosmetics, and yeah, you put a coat of paint on, it looks good. But Mike expresses significant concern about the structural integrity of the building, and what needs to be done to, to secure it. I, I just think it's premature, but, but applying for the grant doesn't obligate us to anything, and I'll certainly be supportive of that. But I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be a person sitting on the board recommending to you and your staff that we go ahead and rehab that building without the town having, having an opportunity to weigh in and understand what the obligation is going to be.
I believe we've tried to have those opportunities by having multiple warrant articles specific to this property.
Yeah, well, let's, let's do what I mistakenly.
You have doubt last time?
I did. Well, let's go for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar warrant article. Let's, let's make it real, see if, see if people want to do it. We, we did that with the carpenter home, not two fifty, but we did it with the carpenter home. We stood up in front of the, of the body and explained why we were doing it with the carpenter home, and what, what, who thought the end result would be. I, I don't, I don't know about you, but I have no idea what the end result would be with, with the grant. I really don't. I don't, I don't agree with what we're doing here. I think, I think this should be a fully rentable space. And if there's an opportunity for, for people to rent it, I, I think it should be income producing. I don't think it should be a, a town hall of function. So I understand we're getting there, but we, we need to get to the point where, where this building is paying for itself and building reserves so that it can continue to pay for itself, in my opinion. And that's the way I would feel about the grant. I just think it's a hell of an obligation.
Sounds like we should have the Grange Hall.
Well, no, I, I, that might be, that might be the way to go.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not purporting. I, I'd like to see what happens with the Wilcox School, and whether we're buying it, or we get it, or it goes to some other entity. Because the, the Wilcox School, for me, would drive a lot with the Grange, because it provides parking. Maybe the Grange moves over to the Wilcox School, because it would land, because it would give more land for more uses for the, for the Grange. But I'm just repeating myself, but.
I have no dog in this fight.
This has been a record for us, for us, ever since Jerry Bell didn't swing his boom. If he'd have swung his boom back in ninety-three, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Just like if Larry Waters hadn't called in the, the fire in town hall, we wouldn't be having that discussion either. So, you know, those, those things happened, and obviously, or didn't happen. But if all we're doing is, is going along with it to file the grant, if you're around, if you support that.
Maybe town funds would already be in the Grange Hall Capital Reserve Fund, so it's not any new appropriation. It's funds that are for that purpose, so I mean, they, they could be, it could be, if we said, no, we don't want to spend any money in the building, they could go back to the general fund, if the voters approve that. But it's not, it's not a new appropriation, it's not new CIP funding for next year.
I think it was. I thought there was one that was for. Remember the weatherization, the bottom, the door?
Keep the window that had fallen out with that, with the doors.
I thought I wanted some paint for the front.
We can do that if you want. I think that.
And it needs to go to the, right?
What's that?
What's that, briefly? It needs a.
It needs everything, no, seriously.
I definitely, I'll make that more soon. Second, we allow the Grange Hall advisor committee and Swansea Preservation Society to apply for the seventeen seventy-two Foundation of Preservation Alliance, to replace the windows at Grange Hall. You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it. Assign with the general assessing contract. Dave Marazoff.
So Dave Marazoff is going back to his former EBA, Dave Mar, yeah, Dave, Marazoff assessing him from M and N Assessings, and then business transition. Our statistical update, which will be next year, we don't have a current contract for that, so we don't need to do an assignment. But we would need to assign our general assessment, which was a four, maybe five year contract, so. I am seeking that authorization to assign.
And you're pleased with the current performance, the way it's going?
Yes, overall.
Make a motion. Second, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it. Is summer meeting scheduled?
I suggested, uh, we could do first three or every other, I suggested at least, you know, meeting the week between Christmas and New Year. Sometimes we meet if we have like a last minute budget item, or you need to get ready for the posting of the public hearings, but I think we can probably get by with two, maybe the thirteenth if we end up meeting it, but I think two meetings, we'll probably be able to wrap things up. Sixteenth, twentieth? Thirteen thousand needed?
Yeah. Consideration of old business?
I have none at this time.
Administrative update?
Uh, nothing beyond the, I think I have paid for various projects, but we're hoping to get the Upper Wilson Pond Dam project out to bid at the end of this week, so that'll be. We're just moving forward, and I call with council and engineers about easements, so. So we are, we are going forward as planned on that.
Any non-public sessions?
I do not have any.
I just have a question about the allocation.
Sure.
Is that money, the fifty-two thousand, from DOT, is, is that already done?
Has not, has not been spent, has not been committed, and they recommend and request that we don't, offset by you know, the news or something else, so they'd like, they'd like that to be additional work, so it'd be something we, maybe take a, take a project from a future year in CIP or something and move it up.
So the, the reason I was asking was because of their line that it's, that has been, that it is available.
We have received it, I believe.
We have received it, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't allocate it.
Yeah.
I think we should as part of when we go out to bid for road, road work next year.
Does that help, any of CIP's new rehab?
It does in the big picture, yes. And I think we have another, I don't know if the amount is similar, which, so I don't want to quote it, but we have a separate amount for bridges, which I mentioned with Steve, Steve this year, so certainly helpful. No more bite of the apple, anybody? Public input while we're still here? But we came back.
Is it cold out there?
I am good.
You what?
Yes, yes.
So this, I'm a member of the New Hampshire Railroad Coalition, and they did a calendar for twenty twenty-four. So railroad across the state, so enjoy.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Very good tonight.
I get a couch and a dress? Second, you all in favor?
Aye.
More done. Thank you. Starting to puppy up for a while.
Starting to puppy up for a while.